Don't see you for years.
And welcome to the Brayton City Council meeting on Wednesday, April 24th at 2024, 8:30 a.m. in City Hall Council Chambers. This time we'll ask Pastor Troy Masterson with Bible Baptist Church to come forward, give us our prayer, and then we'll do the invocation after. Please stand.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this opportunity to gather and govern the affairs of this city. Lord, I ask your hand a blessing upon each leader here, that you give them great wisdom in the decisions that are to be made today. And Lord, I pray that we would honor you through our words and our actions and seek to honor you in everything that's said and done here today. Pray these things now in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Join us in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor for coming and taking your time. And Madam Clerk?
We do not have any presentations or proclamations scheduled this morning.
All right, so we'll move right along into citizen comment. Citizen comment will be accepted during the citizen comment portion of the meeting on any non-agenda items, agenda items, future agenda items, or topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on the public hearings at the appropriate time. I just want to remind everybody, at the last meeting, we did have some audience disruptions. I'm just warning you now, if there's an audience disruption, we will ask you to leave or you'll be escorted out. So, thank you. Madam Clerk, we'll do the citizen comment, and I only have one. Mike Meehan, please come forward. State your name and your city of residence for the record. Good morning, sir. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Mayor. Mike Meehan, Manatee County. I'm here to talk about the bacterial levels in North Palmosola Bay. I've previously addressed the Brayton City Council on the topic, and these are the readings for the month of March on a weekly basis. Ending 2/29, the reading was 246. I should point out, any reading above 70 is considered dangerous. So, the first reading, February 29th, was 246. An amazingly, astoundingly scary number for March 5th. The number was 1,121. March 18th, the reading was 368, and on February, March 25th, the reading was 934. The numbers are quite high and quite dangerous. I did have one idea that I'd like to share with you for notifying the public about this. As you know, the Florida Department of Health has a notification for the south side of Palmosola Bay, but there is no notification system for the north side unless you read the Sun Coast Waterkeeper Report, which is published on a weekly basis. It's kind of the Smokey the Bear idea. I don't know if you have visited out west, but there's a Smokey the Bear sign at most of the parks, and it's just a fire danger level, which high, medium, and low, and gives campers and hikers an idea about whether or not it's safe, you know, to hike on the trails in the woods. So, I had an idea, and I'm going to call it Mini the Mermaid. And you can have a nice little mini on a sign and just post on a weekly basis, poor, moderate, you know, okay to swim. So, I just submit that for you to think about as a way to let the people in Manatee County and visitors from up north know about the quality of the water in North Palmosola Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have no other comments. Counsel have any comments? Or the only comment I would have is obviously we had Dave Tomasco of Sun Coast Waterkeeper come give us a presentation in the, just in the past, not too long ago. And obviously, anything we can do to give information is important, but you know, with what Dave keeps telling us, you know, Mrs. Coker?
Yeah, I did just Monday got a report from Mr. Tomasco. There is a bloom out there right now. I'll share that with everyone, and I will also share it with Mr. Meehan. I think I have his email talking about, you know, what's going on in the waters.
It's a combination of a lot of things.
Yes, yes.
All right. Any other questions, or we'll move forward to consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
Staff is requesting approval of items A through D.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
And second by Ms. Coachman. All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Perry, would you like to say something first that you did talk with everybody?
I had the opportunity to speak with each and every counselor about the consent agenda. We were able to provide additional detail as, you know, acquired by individual counselors, and I'm glad we're able to do that. I think it helps the process along, and everybody's pretty diligent and reviews these items in detail.
All right. Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, we'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Madam Clerk?
Item 7A is the continuation of public hearing for Resolution 2420.
All right. And who do we have the pleasure of meeting with today?
Yours truly. I am the Assistant Director of Planning Community Development, Greg DeLong. Since we, the last meeting on April 10th, staff did meet with the applicants. We met on Friday, the 12th, and reviewed, you know, the request and came up with a conclusion on some stipulations to help guide City Council in making hopefully a possible resolution to, and decision on this case. The applicants, since the last meeting, did submit a letter, which was in your packet, withdrawing their request for a lounge. So, the request moving forward today would only be for the indoor amusement center. In addition, when working with the applicant, the applicant did agree to these nine stipulations or conditions that are listed on your screen. And that is what I have today. And the applicant is here if you have any questions.
All right. The one thing that you and I talked about, Greg, and kind of was possibility of, if something happens, if this business closes down for a period of time, and then, you know, it's for a certain time. I mean, I know sometimes we have things where they're 12 months, if it's closed consecutively for 12 months. We had that with drive-ups. We had it with car washes. Is there something in here because of it's our main focus downtown that we could put something in it like 30 days if they close for some reason?
Yeah.
That they would lose?
That is not listed in these nine conditions that are listed on the screen, but that is something you as counsel could have that conversation with the applicant.
We just know that-
I know we mentioned it in the conversation. Maybe there's something we could add that would, and it was something we have not discussed with the applicant, that should the business close for a period of 30 days, that the adopted special use application becomes null and void, with the exception of maybe a natural disaster or a health pandemic against.
And the reason I say that is because we are getting some complaints by our merchants on Main Street that there's some businesses that are just boarded up, or windows, paper one day, plastic the next day, and they're not really, you know, we don't want boarded up places, and things are happening where, you know, and I know there's some cities that if you're not within 30 days, something has to happen, or timeframes. So, we're looking at, I'm looking at possibly bringing in an ad hoc committee to do something with the downtown core of what can be done, like other cities have done, to really keep it vibrant, you know, and not have the derelict properties that just sit for years, you know, like a couple of them are. So, Mr. Perry, did you have something? Or that's all you reach on that?
No, I was just-
Okay, reaching, okay. All right. Any other questions or comments or concerns? I mean, Mr. Rudicell, is that something that a 30-day is reasonable, or if it's accepted?
Yeah, I mean, if the applicant is willing to accept that as a condition, I don't see any reason we couldn't include that in the order.
All right. Other comments? I know we've pushed this can down the road. It's time to make a decision today, I believe. I don't think we can push it down the road anymore. It's not fair to the applicant. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you. Mr. DeLong or Ms. Singer? I've kind of struggled with this one because it seems that every time we have a public hearing, we have this brought forward, the information changes. And I don't see a lot of consistency with it, which makes me feel very uncomfortable. And when we had talked about the hours of operation, well, first we were told that, well, we don't really know the hours that we want to be open yet. And then I see this, and it's like the hours of use shall be between the hours, you know, between basically 6:00 a.m. in the morning until 2:00 a.m. the next morning. I'm wondering about the, that does not appear to be compatible to me with the other businesses that we have. I know that we have some businesses that stay open till 2:00, but they're mostly bars. And this was brought forward to us as a family-friendly activity. I don't know many places I'd want, and I know they're saying after 8:00 o'clock, they're not going to allow anybody else that's under 21 in there. But I'm concerned about the compatibility with our downtown. And can you speak to that, please?
Um, yeah.
Is it, I mean, I don't see it, so.
Yeah, I think if you look at the staff report, you'll see the list of the criteria that they have to meet. And as you're speaking to essentially criteria I, which is general compatibility or appropriateness with adjacent properties and other properties in the district with special consideration given to the proposed hours of operation. And understandably, they're coming forward as an amusement and perhaps attracting, you know, a younger crowd. Some of the stipulations spoke to, you know, only, you know, minors up to a certain time. But if you feel that that's still not compatible, I think under that criteria, I think what you're speaking to is that perhaps it's not compatible with that criteria and, you know, not permissible really as a special use. They still, you know, we're not taking away their use. If you determine to deny the amusement parlor, they can still have a restaurant. They can still have a cafe. They can still have a couple of pinball machines as long as that is accessory to and subordinate to the primary use, which is an eating and drinking establishment. They can't exceed 49% in receipts for alcohol. And in our conversations with them, they're just talking about like canned beer and a few other things, and primarily being food. So, if they did decide to become primarily a cafe, that use is available to them as a permitted use. So, it's not that you're denying them any use of the property, but, you know, the point to a special use is that if you don't feel they can meet all those criteria, then you have, you know, an obligation really to consider a denial of the request.
Well, and I am concerned about having a special use, and special uses can be forever and ever. Amen. And again, I know that we've talked about wanting to get more apartments downtown. The buildings nearby have the ability to do that, but I can't imagine anybody wanting to live in an apartment that's going to be very near or next door to a pinball arcade with the noises that pinball machines make, and they want to be open until 2:00 a.m. I'm just having a very hard time with this.
All right. And the applicant is here if you wanted to discuss the conditions or any additional conditions.
All right. Mr. Kramer?
To the point that Councilwoman Barnaby made, isn't the reason these things are changing is because we've sort of asked them to change it? Like the whole hours of operation and the liquor sales? I mean, they withdrew the lounge request. I mean, isn't that sort of part of what we've been asking about?
Well, I think the, one of the reasons that, if I may, sir, that we keep asking to get information is every time we ask a question, we get a different answer at times.
I think that was the two owners.
Well, I understand that, but I think the information that when they first came forward, we, it was very loosey-goosey, and we were trying to get them to give us something that we could vote up or down.
Agreed.
And that's, again, I just, I am struggling with this being compatible.
Okay. I think it's within the entertainment that was mentioned in that section I, personally. So, I'll just leave it at that.
I think to two comments that each of you made. Mr. Kramer, when I first saw it, I was excited about the adult game room type situation, where when you go to bigger cities, they'll have those where at lunchtime, you go in and get a sandwich, but you can do that little machine with the bowling or pinball. And, you know, so I thought it was going to be that, and then we heard that it was going to be pinball sales. And then we had kind of morphed into something else with alcohol sales, and then now it's coming back. And as Ms. Barnaby's point, or Vice Mayor Barnaby's point of there's opportunity now that I think is going to be coming through our CRA to help some of the upstairs turn into apartments, where it was so cost prohibitive before, but now I think the CRA is coming up with ways to make those apartments become more reality because of some grants and things of that, if everything goes well tomorrow. So, you know, we don't want to do something that could put us backwards a little bit. And I don't know that, I'm not saying this is, because I was very excited about that type of out, you know, amusement where you can do it. And it has changed quite a bit, and it's still confusing to a point. And sometimes that's why I want it, the 30 days, if something happens and they close, you don't want it just to be sitting there for 12 months if the council's pleasure is to pass it. So, I believe Mrs. Moore had a comment or question?
I was just going to note that I think that the hesitancy is legitimate. I think we're all nervous about how it will turn out, but I just want to note that I think that if we want to design downtown, then we have to do it thoughtfully on a grander plan, so that we don't have these more difficult decisions. So, I would like to see us, you know, potentially have a workshop or something, so that we, maybe after after StanTech reports on the visioning, so that we can kind of boil down what our vision is for the downtown and how planning can help us actually accomplish that generally, so that we don't have to struggle with the, you know, individual requests that, you know, is it going to tip the scale to more of a bar? You know, what we're, an element that we're trying to avoid? I don't know. It's hard to say. But I feel like we should overall decide what we want downtown to look like.
And I think that's a process we're going through, and when they did downtown by design many years ago, it was a process that they went through. And some of the bars that came in at the moment might have been the right thing. But obviously, we're seeing is not the right thing now. And I think for, as a consensus, we've talked, we as a council and mayor's administration are not supportive of bars only anymore. You know, we want more restaurants and bars and, you know, together as well as entertainment. So, that's why I think this is a struggle, because we just don't know what this is and how it's going to play into it. So, you know, I know, and again, we've talked about it now for the third time. And so, you know, I just think that, you know, where we are is where we are. I don't know if the applicant wants to talk before we go to the public hearing and kind of give us a little bit update. And I'd just like to say something before you go. If we all didn't care about our downtown, we wouldn't be wordsmithing this so much. It would just be a no and move on.
Right. I care about the downtown. That's why I'm trying to open up something different.
And we agree, so, I mean-
And the reason this is, I'm trying to have a business, I'm not going to be open at 6:00 a.m. until it's 2:00 a.m. I just want the ability to be open until 2:00 a.m. if that is what happens. So, I want the ability to be open up at 6:00 a.m. and do breakfast, if that seems to be what works out. As far as pinball goes, we are doing pinball for people to play, and as well, they will be for sale. So, also, I'm a tenant that have been paying rent for this place for two years. So, if I close down, I'm not there 30 days later or whatever. So, I don't know if anybody had any more questions, but yeah, the hours are just, we want, and we have changed stuff, like Mr. Kramer said, because you guys, we're just trying to help, you know, we're trying to make this work out. So-
Well, I don't blame you.
But I'm in a downtown area, trying to be, which is a lot of bars, but I'm trying to do something different, not be a bar. I don't want to be a bar. I want to be a cafe. So, that's the best I can do. It's a little complicated because there's pinball, there's food, there's, you know, beer, there's non-alcoholic drinks, matcha. We have a cappuccino machine. So, we're trying to do something different downtown. I don't want to be a bar, that's for sure. I've said that since day one, so.
I think one of the things that I've heard over these meetings is that, you know, hours of operation are, we see nothing good happens after midnight.
I hope I'm not open late, to be honest, yeah.
But I don't blame you from a business standpoint, if there's an opportunity because something is positive and you want to be open those hours, if all of a sudden, you know, we know what's happening with our breakfast restaurant downtown is struggling right now, and sometimes closed for almost a month. But if you had an opportunity to help that part of it, you know, it might be a market for you. You know, and it might be something that we need, and those type of things I think we've all talked about, we need. It's just, you know, when it came into the, you know, we know what's happening with our bars.
Sure. And again, not to blame you. I'm aware of that actually recently. I didn't realize that this was such a big deal downtown.
To happen with you, and I mean, we're hearing it from a lot of citizens.
I am too now.
And that, you know, we want to try to clean that up, and, you know, and then obviously, on the day that we were talking about it last time, it was a bust.
Yeah.
And it's not, again, not to put that on you, but it just didn't, you know,
Sure.
go through it. So, you know, that's why I think I feel the council's struggling in a positive and a tough way. And that's why, you know, because again, to Mrs. Barnaby's point, to answer maybe something for Mrs. Moore, it's, once we do this, you got it.
Right.
We can't come and say, oh, unless you do something illegal, you know.
Again, I am a tenant, so I don't know, I don't understand what you guys are coming with the closing portion. But yeah, I mean, if I'm closed, I'm, you know, I just open up somewhere else or whatever. But yeah, then whoever is rented to that, I'm sure the special use wouldn't carry over to the next tenant, so, you know.
Not if it's 30 days.
Right, right, or-
Because most things are a year, you know, 12 months.
Well, I hope to be here 10 years or longer, so, yeah.
All right. Any questions, sir? Yes, sir?
Some legal inquiry from, on this subject regarding whether the special use runs with the land. What's interesting is we've heard the speaker speak about being a tenant, and I don't know if the application was put in by the tenant for the special use or the land of, the owner of the property.
It was the owner.
It was the owner?
I remember it being the owner.
Does the vest, you know, there is a right. Does it transfer to the owner? So, he can sell it to someone else with the same special condition. Does it run with the land thereafter?
Yeah, the answer is yes. We always require the property owner to submit the application, and the development approval would run with land. So, it could go from tenant to tenant, as long as the, obviously, any conditions that were imposed would continue to apply.
I have a question then.
Yes.
For Mr. Rudicell.
Yes.
Well, then, how does that 30 days that they were discussing, does that mean 30 days, but it doesn't really matter? Because it's going to stay on there?
No, not necessarily. It just means that if there was a turnover and the owner wanted to keep the amusement center use, they'd have to make sure that there wasn't a 30-day gap.
That sounds like a-
Okay, so, let me see. So, if the right vest with the property owner who isn't here today, and this particular lease, leasee, leaseor, leasee, excuse me, decides that it's not viable and I'm going to back out and do something else, then the property owner can get another individual and say, you have to comport and comply with these terms. So, you could put that sign up there, assuming it's a legal sign under a side ordinance, that says amusement center. And someone we don't even know comes in and has to abide by these conditions, but they have an amusement center. I've seen some amusement centers on 14th Street, on Cortez Road. I don't think we want an amusement center downtown. I got a little bit of a problem with the transferability and flexibility of that. And I don't even know if this particular leasee can agree to the 30-day stipulation of abandonment of the special use right, considering he isn't the applicant.
Well, I, actually, I do represent the owner as well. I happen to-
Do we have a proxy that says that?
I do believe so. I think I did file that, yes. He's in Europe right now, so, yeah.
One of the things that kind of came out of this now, and you said you've had it for two years.
What's that?
You've had it for two years now?
Yeah, yeah.
And had you operated in that two years?
No. We filed permits back in February of last year, and we've been going through that process, so.
Some other activities that got shut down in there, I believe.
Oh, yes, that was beforehand, correct.
That was before you, because-
After that happened, which I wasn't aware of, I was in Europe. I came back, and then I said, let me take over this. Because what had happened is I had planned to do a pinball place there, and I think somebody overheard my conversation, decided to rent that and then do something we didn't know about.
Illegal.
Correct, correct, yeah. I didn't, I didn't know about it. When I came back, I said, whoa, what, this happened. Let me do this pinball. Let me do this the right way. I don't know how that happened, but yeah, correct. Sorry.
And that was on the owner letting it happen, then?
He rented it out, didn't know what, yeah, I mean, the applicant applied, or the tenant applied for something, I guess. I don't know, to operate a business. Okay.
Put it in there.
Yeah, he rented it, no, you know, I think it was, they were, I think it was-
At night, it was open, but the paper was on the window, and it was-
It was rented out. I think they were going to do a vape shop or something, and then next thing you know, he did what he did. And we asked him, didn't you get a license or anything like that? I unfortunately don't know that much about that.
I know other tenants left the building they were in next door because of the issues that were happening.
Right, right.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I want to make, the owner of the building, isn't it Woody that owns-
Robert Woodring.
That owns Kangaroo?
Both buildings, correct.
Not the gentleman that was here the last time with you?
No, that's my partner.
Just want to make sure we're keeping all that.
He's the one doing the Puerto Rican coffee. He'll be doing the cappuccino machine in the cafe, and he's the food guy, and he wants to do this amazing menu that people are going to line up for. So, I, you know, we're combining forces, pinball, cafe, in order to pay rent.
Okay.
Mrs. Moore?
So, just to clarify the 30 days, because I think that that's really the only way that we get a second bite of the apple. The special use runs with the land, but we can add a condition that says that if an amusement center is closed for 30 days, the special use permit is revoked. And we can do that here now without, can we just do that? Can we just say we're going to, you know, that the vote be that, do we need applicant or property owner's agreement to add that condition?
We do. We need the applicant to agree to that. At the end of the day, it's their application, and so if they want it to just be voted up or down without adding that stipulation, they can do that. So, it's up to them to agree.
On that point, I got another concern, but that sounds like it could be workable. Have we looked at the legal sufficiency regarding the proxy? Because the speaker said he represents the owner, from what I understand. And I don't know if that is just what he believes, or whether there's been a review of his authority to represent the owner, written documentation there too, and any consideration of other issues to start with. Secondly, if he does represent the owner, can we put a provision in there about the 30-day abandonment not being assignable, so that it can be basically assigned thereafter to another individual operator? Because that would take care of another individual coming in, trying- Because that would take care of another, another individual coming in, trying to use the same special use.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, typically, we do require, um, an agent authorization form to be executed, um, if, if somebody's gonna be here, so I'll, I'll have to either look in the agenda packet or, or ask planning staff what we've got as far as the, uh.
I felt that was, I felt that was filled out, but I might, I could be wrong, like, you know.
Yeah, that's the agent, it's in the application, part of the application.
So it is, he does have the authority to.
Who's the individual that's designated in the agent application form, is it this particular person?
That's the thing, I don't think you have.
Huh.
Your name on there.
Oh.
And the application actually came in under Mr. Woodrigg.
Oh, we didn't do the agent?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which council was that?
Well, in, in name of agent was.
Oh, he put himself.
That's Robert, yeah, hmm, okay. Okay, so then the answer would be no.
May I just?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the concern the amusement, or is the concern the lounge that has been withdrawn? How much is, how important, and this is a question, like, you know, for discussion purposes, how important do we find the thirty day suggestion?
Well, I, I, my, the reason I wanted a timeframe, because in, in my years on the council, and, and, you know, we approved something in your ward, that was a mechanic shop, and it was a three to two vote to approve it, and I was on the, the approval side, because I felt like in that area, there was an opportunity that the market would correct itself, if it didn't, or the property would sit abandoned, so, but it was, I didn't know we could adjust that, so it was twelve months. Well, the prob- it's, it's adjusted, it's not a car lot anymore, but for twelve months, they tried to sell it as a car lot, you know, or lease it as a car lot. And now it's a very nice boutique reclaimed, you know, right there past the Ascura on that side.
Yeah.
Where, but at the moment, there was nothing going in there, so, you know, I just think that my, my reason for timeframes is that if it shuts down, and somebody else wants to come in, but they're thinking they can get more money from something else, they'll let it sit for that timeframe. And I think we, you know, there's some cities out there that, that you can't be shuttered for that long on certain, you know, you can't have paper on your window for years and years and years. And we're trying to look into that, but I wanted to wait till after our strategic plan came through and give some ideas. I don't believe our strategic plan's gonna say, open ten more bars on Main Street. You know, they're gonna give us some ideas on, and then we have to decide what that next step is, and we know restaurants, um, bars, I mean, some people out there try to make, you know, the name of a, of establishment that it's a bar, but we want restaurants that are, you know, um, bringing people to our town, and they may serve alcohol, and that's okay, I'm not against that, but just a all-day bar is not what this city wants anymore, and I'm confident that the citizens will want that, and they say it.
I agree.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just looking at the application here, and I'm looking at the authorization form, and it says Robert Woodrigg Ring authorizes Robert Woodring as the agent.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we already cleared, yeah, I was not on there yet. We had talked about it, I thought we did some. Cause I felt I.
Where does that leave us, because he can't agree to any of these stipulations there?
Is it possible to conditionally approve it, subject to the approval of those conditions by Mr. Woodrigg later on?
No, I mean, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, he needs to be here and.
Yes, sir.
Have it on the record.
Ms. Coachman?
I respect your tenacity, but it sounds like you're gonna have to hang in there with us a little bit longer, cause I agree with the thirty day stipulation, but legally, you can't say yay or nay with that.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I don't know, I, I, I don't, I think we're conflating what we're, what's before us, so I, I like the thirty days, um, but I'm also reassured that we're not here for the lounge anymore, so we have, you know, to the extent that it, the tide starts to turn and it becomes that, I, I'm, from my viewpoint, we have another bite of that apple, because for, if it starts to look a little like a bar, he has to come, the property owner has to come before us again to ask for the lounge, am I, please correct me if I'm not saying something legally accurate, but I believe that they have to come before us for the lounge component again.
Correct.
Um, so as far as the amusement center goes, would I, you know, I, I would, I think that our goal is just to make sure that the behavior is what you're representing, and that it stays that way. But at this point, I think that we've probably fleshed it out as much as we can, and, and now that we don't have the lounge before us, they cannot be a bar. They now can only be an amusement center, I don't know what kind of, what other kind of use I would be concerned about if it wasn't him, other, you know, short of being shuttered and being vacant, that would be something I would not, that would be an undesirable outcome. But as far as some rotation of the use, I don't know what I, like, what are we looking at is the concern of someone else operating the amusement center?
Mrs. Coachman?
I'm with you with that, um, that is the concern that I have, um, but it sounds like if we can have this additional stipulation that may give us some secure feeling, what it really boils, boils down to is, you've made a lot of concessions, it seems, um, trying to meet our needs, I mean, I would like for you to look at midnight instead of two AM, but that's, I don't throw that wrench in here right now, but, um, basically, we would then have to do our due diligence and make sure.
Right, but what I, what I'm concerned with, what I've heard now, especially from the legal standpoint, is I don't know how he can agree to any of this right now, because he doesn't have the authority to agree.
So you'd have to vote on.
One through nine, and if we add ten, it, you know, so I don't know, is that a mute point, Mr. Rudisso?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just looking in the record here, and we, we don't have anything in the record that reflects that the applicant has agreed to any of the stipulations.
Which, I'm sorry, I mean, I, maybe that should've came up sooner, but, but coming to that, I don't, barring that, that, to, to approve or deny today, you know, we don't know what the owner would agree to any of them, or the, the applicant. Mr. Perry?
Just to close it out, um, from my perspective, I have talked with a lot of the council, and what's come out today has been the concerns, I think this particular individual has come down here and shown really good faith, and he does have tenacity, and there's a certain comfort level with some of these representations, and if they don't come to fruition, um, we do have code enforcement, we have the police and other types of folks that can deal with that, we don't wanna have to go in that direction, but, but we could, if necessary. My concern is that, frankly, that the, the use gets transmutated from this individual to another individual, and that that use can be trans- transmutated and transferred by the owner, and, and that we should have a prohibition that it can't be transferred, because what I see when I hear amusement center is, in my mind, I get this vision of this thing that says amusement arcade on a nondescript building in neon lights with no windows, and they're all over Manatee County, and if you really want that on Main Street, that's kind of a weird deal, in my opinion. So I think we have to legally protect against that, the conditions are good, the applicant that's before us right now, not the legal applicant, but the speaker applicant, um, I think we, you know, I, I've been speaking with council, I think that there's a certain degree of trust and, and, and credibility, but I think that those uncertainties and restrictions need to be included in it, where Woody, Mr. Woodruff, who is the applicant, understands that if we grant you, Mr. Woodruff, as the property owner, these special uses, if you don't use them after thirty days, they're gone. If you try to do something and transmute the use to the arcade and call it amusement center, we're gonna challenge it, and, and, and that type of thing, we're protecting our citizens, our community, and our Main Street against those type of legal wranglings, in my opinion.
Well, you brought up something that made me think of it again, and, and which you didn't know about, or you found out about it, he already did it once. Mr. Woody already, or what, what already did it once with, whether it was him or he gave it to somebody else, but it was an illegal gaming place there that we had to shut down, and you know how hard they are to shut down, and all the investigations you have to do. So I don't know if that can, you know, I mean, it's maybe right or wrong, but, Mr. Rudisso?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, the, the concern from a legal standpoint, and I, and I do understand what, I understand the concerns of the council and what Mr. Perry is saying. When we're applying a land use approval, we're looking at the proposed use being applied to the criteria that we have in our code, and so we can't base it on who the user is. What we can do is, we can describe the use and limit it such that we know what it's going to be, and so that it can't convert to the other types of uses that we might be concerned about. Um, but we can't, we can't base it on who that user is. So I think, I mean, there are some things in here that, in, in the stipulations that, um, that would provide some of that, you know, if we could, you know, tie it, I mean, we do have, for example, there's language in there that says it'll only be pinball and video games, and it won't be sim- simulated gambling, um, if there are other concerns, we can, we can try to really nail down, um, what the proposed use is without, without trying to, without trying to tie it to the user. So I think, at this point, the options are probably, you know, either we voted up or down today based on the proposed use with no stipulations, or, and nobody wants to do this, but we'd have to continue it again and get updated, um, agent authorization forms, if the council thinks that the use with conditions is something that, that could be approved.
Ms. Barnaby?
Mr. Rudisso, my question is this, since Mr. Woodruff signed as the agent, but he has not attended one of these meetings, how do we know that he is even aware of these conditions?
Well, that's exactly right, I mean, that's why we would need to continue this and get proper agent authorization on the record, that would say, the agent authorization would say, the lesee is authorized to pursue this application on my behalf.
Mayor, for Mr. Rudisso, for purposes of today, does this individual even have legal authority and efficacy to agree to a continuance, since he's listed on it?
Um, I, I think if the council wanted to approve a continuance, that doesn't, uh, you know.
One of the things you said, Mr. Rudisso, and, and, and I kind of agree with it, but I also, you know, if this council wasn't trying to be, um, understanding, listening, doing things, we wouldn't be here for the third time.
Right.
So it would be just a up or down and move on from there. I, I just think that, you know, because of what we found out today, that maybe we should continue it to our last meeting in May, and that gives plenty of time for.
I would just get added to the, as an agent, just do the paperwork, I saw the paperwork, I thought we filled it out, maybe just something happened, but we discussed it, and cause he knew he couldn't make these meetings, so I said, well, I'll represent you.
So, should we open the public comment, ask if anybody's here, and then continue it to May twenty second?
If, if that's the desire of the council.
Alright, let's, let's go, thank you, let's open the public comment, anyone wishing to speak, anyone wishing to speak, anyone wishing to speak. Hearing none, we'll close the public comment, chair will entertain, is it, do we need a motion for that, or just a continuance?
Yes, it's a, it'd be a motion to continue.
Continue to the May twenty second meeting.
Are we not having an eighth meeting, May?
May twenty second.
Okay.
The second meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to continue.
To, to May twenty second.
May twenty second.
Thank you. Alright, so we have a motion and a second, um, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll, um, start the vote in Ward three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Okay, we'll continue this five to zero to the May twenty second meeting. Alright, thank you, Mr. Perry.
Mayor, council, I'm at the podium on, uh, item number eight A, which is the second note modification agreement between the city of Bradenton and Florida Cultural Group, uh, the package includes some of the paperwork associated with this. I did have the opportunity to brief all the councilors, each of them had questions about this, um, I, I think everybody's pretty familiar with, um, with the Florida Cultural Group, um, also known as the Players, and, and Ms. Janine is behind me, and, uh, they have a note that the city basically had provided funding, uh, for purchases of some property for this project several years ago, and we are in the process of trying to extend that note to allow, um, the, the, uh, cultural group to do property development there, um, and basically try to maximize the highest and best use of their property, repay the note. I'd also point out that the provisions require, and, um, Janine has agreed to break, basically be completely current and actually pay next year's payment of interest on it, the, it is an interest-bearing note, so we do earn interest on it, and, uh, Janine's agreed to basically, uh, pay next year's payment in full, um, in advance, and so it's a two-year extension, I think with market conditions right now, with some of the cool stuff they're doing over there, some of the potential, um, i- i- it's probably a good business decision to do, for sure. Um, I, I certainly think that, that, uh, the cultural group takes the legal obligation seriously, they've acted in good faith, and any sort of forbearance or extension is warranted, and I'll let Janine make any comments she wants to say, without getting into great detail because of the time.
We just appreciate the opportunity and know that we want to make sure every councilperson knows that we are doing our due diligence to find the highest and best use for the property across the street.
Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I appreciate you saying that we're, now we're committed to being current, um, but I think that the, I think that paragraph two of the modification would have to be revised, because it references unpaid interest due, the last sentence of paragraph two references having an outstanding balance of interest, and that calculation ma- I mean, that makes the calculation for the total amount due, the balance on, uh, June thirty, twenty twenty-six. I don't think that's correct if we start with having an out, an outstanding balance of twenty-three thousand. So I, I, I think it's great that we're gonna come current and we're gonna pay the year in advance, but I think that this paragraph needs to, and maybe in the very least, just delete the last sentence.
I'm not completely following, Mayor, Councilwoman Gonzalez, more.
I can show you.
If you could just.
Yeah.
So are we saying that the, so there's a line that says the un- the accrued unpaid interest due on the note as of the effective date is twenty-three thousand, we're saying that's not accurate, that's been paid now?
Well, I don't think it has been paid, but I understand that this is the, you know, the commitment is to make that payment as well as this coming year's interest payment, so that at, at execution, they're, they're paid through, their interest payments through twenty twenty, I mean, I guess, June twenty twenty-five, is that right? So that there's really just one more interest payment?
Right.
No, she's shaking her head, no.
She's shaking her head, no.
Well, there's two, there's two, but they would pay one and it would dance, so, I don't know how you wanna look at that.
Right, there's two, so there'll be one left.
I'm not sure if you're thinking that the math is incorrect because the arrears, basically, and that there would be additional interest on that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, the, well, and I mean as written, so I know that they're gonna make the payment, so it's not gonna happen that way.
Right.
But as written, yes, the math is not correct, because there's an outstanding balance of interest that presumably would be added to principal, and then interest would be calculated on top of that.
I see, so what we're talking about is two percent interest on twenty-three thousand dollars, that is, uh, would have a period of, of whatever months that, that, that was due, is that correct?
That is, but I understand, yeah, so I think.
Two percent on twenty-three thousand.
Yeah, so, but let's, let's, I think what we do is, we can correct that, and then the, the balance would be correct for the going forward.
Sure, and just to explain.
Yeah.
Explain, the prior agreement was this year, as, um, some economic development opportunities for the property use came in, um, Janine came to us and said, can I make quarterly payments? And I said, yeah, but you will have to make the quarterly payments, which she did, out of those quarterly payments, two, basically, we had to be delayed, and that's basically the arrears that's, that are in there. The total annual. The total annual agreement with interest is forty-six thousand and some change every year, and so they basically paid half that. Moving forward, they're gonna pay the, 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 the twenty-three thousand that's in arrears, plus next year's interest ahead, so there could be two percent due for a portion of a year.
Now we got...
And I've just been given a check for sixty-nine thousand. I, I, I think it's a fairly de minimis amount.
Yeah, my, my only point was that I think we should delete the last sentence of paragraph two, that's it, because this, now we, there is no balance, there is no twenty-three thousand as of right now.
Okay.
But that can be fixed.
It literally just says the accrued unpaid interest due on the note as of the effective date is twenty-three thousand, which represent unpaid and due interest from a portion of twenty twenty-three. That's not true anymore.
Got it.
So, we should just delete that.
Well, my ma, math says if you add that up, it's sixty-nine thousand, and this letter says it, I just got a check for sixty-nine thousand, so I'm, if you want me to go back and do some math, I will.
I don't think you...
Just tell me which way you want me to do it.
I think the, the council can approve, I mean, we have the gist, that it is, uh, a two-year extension with interest payments to be made biannually, and I think we can approve that with and authorize, uh, legal counsel to correct the, the document as needed.
All right, so is there a motion to...
Make a motion that we approve, the request is brought forward to us with legal counsel looking to make sure that everything is up to snuff, how's that?
I'll second that.
All right. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero, thank you. And we're looking forward to, uh, very exciting things over there.
Next day's there.
We appreciate it, we look forward to it.
Yeah, thank you.
For the record, I will turn over the proceeds.
The clerk.
City clerk, Melvin, thank you.
All right, Mr. Perry, any unfinished business?
Mayor, just real briefly, um, we're gonna be doing some mid-year adjustment requests coming up, um, at, at the next meeting, we do this every year. There's gonna be a significant budget request that deals with, um, operations training and scientific testing, basically, for our water program, both potable water and, uh, also, also the, uh, the wastewater treatment. And so, we'll be explaining that in more detail as we move forward, but I just wanted to let you know that, um, we have to make an investment, that investment deals with the future. There's two piece, uh, two, two major components regarding our, our water program, Water and Sewer. Of course, as I've said, it's a thirty million dollars a year annual budget, um, that generates revenue, um, the profitability and margins are pretty good on it, uh, as it covers the cost and, and capital and things like that, but there's also components that deal with the personnel piece, the training, the scientist, uh, requirements that are necessary for reportable, um, water testing, as well as quantitative reactive testing to let us know what the levels are, and so we need to do a better job at that, in my opinion. I think that's contributed, we've all learned a little bit about how that has contributed to some of the deficiencies we've seen, so I'll explain that more in depth, but I wanted to broach the subject now, no action needed.
Right, and I think one of the things that hopefully the public gets is, some of these infrastructure things are older, and we're looking towards making sure that we are maintaining them at the level they need to be at, as well as looking towards the future of what will have to be maintained a little bit better than in the past. And obviously, when Bill Evers in the eighties and early nineties did the water treatment system, and some of the, the things that were done were great, but they're getting a little older now, we gotta make sure that we're maintaining them at the right level, with the right staff, and, you know, hopefully with, with the, uh, Public Works Director that comes in.
And even EPA rules have changed.
Have changed, right.
Some of that infrastructure not being effective, 'cause we had to transfer, you know, the, the operations from a non, non-corrosive reactive type of system to something that can tolerate that. There's a, it's a very complex issue.
And if you drive by our water treatment plant on three oh one, you see a lot of stuff going on, and that stuff doesn't happen overnight to begin.
Right.
And it's been going on for a while, now let's keep it moving.
Yeah, and we're gonna continue to keep you all up to speed and probably do some tours of that, and when you walk out there and you see valves that are the size of my, you know, arm reach, seventy-two inch type valves, it's carrying millions of gallons per day, the processing is very, very complex science, biology, chemistry, and the like, and I think it helps you guys to know it at a certain level. You're policymakers, for sure, and I understand that you, you don't do that for a living, I don't do it for a living, we have people that do, but, uh, to, to talk loosey-goosey off the, off the cuff about it sometimes is, uh, is probably not productive to the public benefit.
All right, thank you, Mr. ...
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Perry? Thank you. Um, as we talked, obviously, we wanna try to get out to a great event happening today for children in Kiwanis and our partnership with Kiwanis as much as we do, so does anyone have anything as far as council report that's burning desire to get done before today?
Well, I...
Ms., Ms. Coachman?
Well, I can wait for our next meeting to go in depth, um, but I did have the opportunity to attend the last, um, Bradenton Housing Authority meeting, it was a lot of good stuff, but, and due to time, I'll save it for next.
Okay, good. All right, and the, the one thing that I just wanna bring up is, I met with, uh, Tropicana representatives, which obviously we know how Tropicana has kind of come back when they're out of the PepsiCo part of it, and they're really doing a lot more local things, and the staff that's here has always been local, but they were having to really be the, the small piece of PepsiCo, and, but now they're bringing back, and they do some programming during the summer where they supply two drivers and two vans to feed, um, children, you know, with the school district, so they really work on it. Um, one of the things that, you know, it's not an, an event where it's like we have to go through the Public Events Committee and do all of that, but they would just like to be able to continue, um, feeding the children that are on the Rossi Park, because it's a, you know, um, and the splash pad more than anything at that time, and what they do is between eleven and two, they go to three different locations, so it may be one day at eleven, and they're there for a little while just giving out food to the kids, and they eat it right there because they want the, to see the nutrition getting into the, the children that are there, and they do it at schools, they do it other places, and so it, it really isn't something, it's been being done for years, um, they just wanted, I just thought it was important to bring up, if, you know, it's not where we're going, food trucks and all that, they have a school bus with some bag lunches and give it to the kids, and Monday it might be at eleven, Tuesday it might be at one, you know, but they do it Monday through Friday, and, um, what I've talked, and I talked with our chief, um, is, is maybe we get with the fire department, when we know they're gonna be out there on some days, we're kind of out there rah-rahing with the kids. It's not a police, you know, to, to monitor it, it's not a fire to monitor it, it's more being out there to say, hey, engage the kids, um, because most of them are probably gonna be elementary school kids more than anything with their parents, so, and that was one of the things, Mr. Perry, that when you and I met with the Knight Foundation and the Community Foundation last week, that Lily, who is the main person for the Knight Foundation, and we are one of twenty-six night-ridden cities, which the only thing you'll see in the future is that going backwards, because you had to be a paper when they created that, so we will always be that, nobody else can be it but one of them, and so there's, there's a pool of money that, you know, they're willing to do when you do those collaborations and those type of things, so it was interesting to learn, um, and, and they have three pools of money, but Knight, um, Foundation with the twenty-six cities is something they're, I think, gearing back up again, and that's what they did about ten, fifteen years ago, so we're interested in seeing that, but it's just a kind of food for thought, they're gonna be out there, well, that kind of pun on words, but they're gonna be out there with those children, and, and it might be good, as we find out the timing, that any of us go out there and, you know, rah-rah with it, so...
Touch a truck, maybe bring one of our...
Yeah, do things there, and just, I, I think it's something good to engage, and, and you know, it's, they get there at eleven, and they're probably gone by eleven-thirty, you know, or, you know, something in that, because they gotta get to the next place by twelve, and they rotate it around, and one of the requirements is that they watch the kids, or see the kids start to eat the food, because they don't want it going home and not getting to the kids, and, and because we know, you know, especially those that need us the most, you know, don't always have a meal for two or three days, and I think it was important, so, um, appreciate that, that's all I have. Any quick department heads? Anything specific? All right, hearing none, we'll be adjourned.